February 11th, 2013, meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors. Will hereby come to order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I have a number of requests to address the board this evening. Please note that you have three minutes. And I will ask you that if your comments have been made by a previous speaker, you try to abridge your comments so only getting your points is to maintain the maximum use of your three minutes. The first name I have is Jill Ahn from Macunche.
Hi, my name is Jill Ahn, and I have three children who attend Willow Lane. I'm here again to ask you to reconsider the busing on Willow. I've never been involved in attending school board meetings or township meetings mainly because I've always trusted the officials would make the decisions best, for the best for our children and the township, of course. But since it was announced we'd be using our busing, many of us have realized that in this particular case, it does not seem that we can trust a school board to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the safety of our children. These past several months, I've really opened my eyes a lot to how things are run. In attending several of these meetings, it appears that we probably will be using our busing, no matter how many parents keep coming to the meetings and share their real concerns with you. If it does happen and we lose our busing, I would ask that the school board not remove the busing until all the improvements by both the township and the school have been completed. If the township is not ready to go with all their improvements before the year begins, I do feel that that would be a major safety concern for our children, and I would ask that you delay that, at least do that much for our children, until everything is completed on both ends. Thank you.
The next name that I have is Mr. John Donches.
Hello, Board. John Donches, Erie Mays, Pennsylvania. Just to make an announcement as far as accept the event that we're going to have again. This would be for February 19th, coming up the Tuesday. And this has to do, as you might know, this time for the elections and everything coming on. So what we're going to have is what we call a petition signing event. It is on the 19th, which happens to be the same day as the first day that anybody that's running for any office can get their petition signed. And what we're going to do is have the Lehigh County voter registration people there at the meeting, giving a talk and a presentation on what is necessary, how to do it, what you need to do, provide all the papers that you have, the petition, so if you came, you were thinking about running, you could learn all about it. You could get your petition papers there, you could have anybody that's there in the public sign your petitions, so that you can be on your way. And I was mentioning this for, I think it would be good for the student government body, or anybody actually in the high schools, the students to actually come and learn this process. And that's it, and I have the papers here, I can pass around if anybody wants to see them. Thank you.
The next name I have is Jonathan Berger of Macunche.
Good evening. I'm here once again to speak about the Willow Lane bus issue, which would be the removal of the buses for anyone within a 1.5 distance from the school, which I, once again, I believe is a bad idea. I'm hoping that Mr. Stoltz's transportation resolution will get passed, which is number seven on the agenda. I just want to say, I have, I'm exhausted a lot of my emotional pleas over the past year or so. There's no venom in my voice. It's an excellent school district, and because of that excellent district, I have the standards really high. And that's what, I guess, burns me a little bit about the decision to continue to move forward. Just a couple of facts. I haven't heard anything more about the committee that was supposed to involve the parents. I believe around December it said we're going to form the committee, and we'll hear more after the holidays. I haven't heard anything about that, so I'm looking to hear an update on that. Also, in any type of environment, especially like in the corporate world we're more familiar with, when you do something like that, there's normally like a cost benefit analysis. The number I've seen thrown around is a savings of $60,000. But the amount of money that will have to go for infrastructure improvements, I know it may be the township paying a lot of it, and we are taxpayers, I want to see the total amount that will be spent versus the benefit. Where's the break even point? Is that after year seven, year eight, et cetera? When do we eventually see the savings? Because I think that the safety concerns are far outweighing the cost savings eventually. I've heard the fairness issue brought up, saying, you know, we've got to do this because it's only fair, because people in, students in Alberta, Riss, Jefferson, and maybe some other schools have that same rule with 1.5. But there's many different roads, different layouts, there's a lot more congestion on these roads out by Willow Lane. If you're going to bring up this fairness issue, it's got to be fairness across the board, like the student, the teacher ratio in Willow Lane, which is exorbitant at this point, where there's six second grade classes, of which my student is part of one of them. And each one has around 30, 30 students, give or take. So there's fairness can go on that. And I haven't seen anyone in particular complain, because people would complain possibly, but I haven't seen any, I've been at many of these meetings, I haven't seen one person from Jefferson, Alberta to say, these Willow parents need to pipe down. We do it. I haven't seen any of that. It's speculation. I haven't seen taxpayers saying, we need that $60,000. I have seen one or two older women, when the budget was being passed last year, and they stood up and said, we need every savings. I want you to reduce your salary, I want that $60,000, weight weight on everything. I've seen that just maybe once or twice at those meetings around budget time. I also believe that that transportation should be fully completed and done, to see where we can get the efficiencies, so we can possibly retain the buses from Willow Lane.
Mr. Berger, did you wind it up here?
Okay, that actually concludes my argument. Thanks for listening.
The next person up is Susan Coonan, thank you for the pronouncer, from Macunche, Pennsylvania.
Hi, good evening. As Mr. Ballard said, my name is Susan Coonan. I'm here to talk about the Willow Lane transportation issue. I have two children at Willow Lane. I want to specifically talk tonight about the onsite safety improvements that are needed at the Willow Lane Elementary School campus. As you know, Lower Macunche Township is implementing a two-phase plan to make the area around the school safer. The priority is getting those schools own signs and flashing signals up and around before August 22nd, which is the first day of school. I want to publicly extend my thanks and appreciation to Lower Macunche Township and the Board of Commissioners for tackling this issue and making the safety of our children a top priority. Now it's time for East Penn. It's time for East Penn to step up and do its part. What's your action plan for making the Willow Lane Elementary School campus safer for pedestrians, cars, and buses? What are the top priorities? What is the timetable for getting things done? I have been speaking at you since December 3rd, and when I say "at," I mean "act," because this is not a dialogue. When is the dialogue going to begin? I think it's time that we have another parent meeting for all parents of the Willow Lane community, not just those parents who are in the affected developments. The focus needs to be on on-campus changes and improvements only for this meeting. This will not be a meeting to discuss walking paths or plans. We need to discuss how cars will drop off and pick up children. We need to discuss traffic flow around the school, where students should walk when being picked up, for example. We need to discuss how to properly and safely use the drop-off lane. We need to form an on-campus committee to address these issues as working teams. I want to reiterate that the transportation issue at Willow Lane is a school-wide issue, not just an issue that affects the parents who live in the developments that are scheduled to lose busing. We need to include the entire Willow Lane community in all surveys, planning, and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coonan. The next name I have is Mr. John Jansen of Macunche.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I too am a parent of two children at Willow Lane School, and this is my third time attending the board meeting. In the background, I've been trying to gain information on East Penn's busing policy and transportation financials, as I like to better understand the cost implications and how this might have been implemented in other walking schools within East Penn. I have to say, it's with continued frustration that I find basic information being requested is either not available or is not being provided. Let me just give a few examples. During the meeting of November 27th, the administration communicated that Willow Lane would become a walking school to save money. In that meeting, it was said the savings would be net $60K. Based upon follow-ups, it turns out that the savings is not net $60K, as that only includes the cost of not having four buses. It does not include incremental costs to support a walking school, and there are going to be costs. Subsequently, in the last board meeting, Dr. Seidenberger indicated that it's not about saving money, but it's really about fairness. In an effort to understand how Willow Lane would compare to other East Penn walking schools, I requested information regarding other schools, which I think would be very basic, such as how many students walk, how many students get bused, what are the walking routes, what are the distances, what are the roads they walk along, which ones are hazardous? The response back I got was, this information is not available. If I was a parent at one of these schools, and the administration tells me they don't know where my student is walking when they get dismissed, I'd be quite upset. But now I'm supposed to ask the same administration to chuck into the safety of our children. At the last board meeting, Dr. Seidenberger indicated that it was a walkability study done in 2010, and that the most recent study concluded in 2012 didn't provide any surprises or any new information. I requested a copy of the study from 2010 that was referenced, and I was told that it was not written down. I think we can all agree that something as serious and substantial as a plan to place 350 students in the street warrants it to be written down. But again, right, this is the area that we have to have trust in our administration. Finally, there was a walkability study this past September, and if you look at the application, it's what it says, the people who should highly recommend to attend is people from the township. The people from the township did not participate in a walkability study in September. So I'd ask the board to clearly set expectations from the administration regarding the Willow Lane busing. Is it a financial? If it's a financial, how much money do you expect them to save in that? If it's not financial and it's about fairness, what is, how is fairness assessed? You know, in closing, I'd ask the board to become much more involved in this issue. You know, we greatly appreciate the support we've gotten from Ms. Donches and Mr. Stoltz. And I'd ask that the other board members look beyond the potential line item budget savings, which might be politically expedient, and truly understand the costs and the benefits, which will affect so many of our youngest students. Thank you.
The next name that I have is Ms. Donna Girado of Macunche.
Good evening. I have three children at Willow Lane Elementary School now, and I live in Graymore. The number one concern in our house is the safety of the children. We believe that having busing to school is the safest and most green way to get the children to and from school. We do not consider busing to be our right, but it is a privilege, and it provides safety and reduces traffic and pollution. My children will not walk to school if buses are illuminated. It is not safe for either my first or my fifth grader to walk without a parent next school year. My husband and I both work and cannot spend two hours a day walking to and from school. We are very concerned that not all of the proposed safety changes will be completed by August. It is quite a shame that these things, such as the signage denoting the school zone and the speed limit change signs are not in place still after two and a half years since opening. The traffic will be horrendous, with hundreds of cars coming in and out. I am afraid for the safety of the actual walkers as well, as they will not be safe amongst all the cars. Right now, to my knowledge, there's not a safe plan for the kids on the premises either in the future. We have been told that the plan is that the doors will open and the children will leave. They will walk between hundreds of parked cars and cars driving in and out. It's a disaster waiting to happen, and it's extremely disconcerting as a parent. Another thing that the school would need to consider, possibly extending the timeframe for the drop-off time, and we strongly feel that this should not and cannot cut into instructional time. All in all, the intersections surrounding the school are very dangerous, and I still think even with the flashing signs, the crosswalks, and crossing guards, that busing is a way safer option, the best option for the safety of the children. And one more topic I would like to bring up is to strongly suggest some kind of upgrade to the communication system, where we receive phone messages indicating the school will be closed or delayed or closed early. It is imperative, again, for the safety of the children, that the messages are able to go to more than one phone number per household to ensure the receipt of the message. The messages could go out as text messages or by voice, but I believe that they absolutely need to go to more than one phone number per family. And I, it would be terrible if an elementary school child was sent home to an empty house because the message was not received that school was closed early. To my knowledge, it only goes to one phone number. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last name I have this evening, of course, the people who should address the board, is Mr. Garrett Rhodes of Allentown, speaking about the Amens Key Club and backup coat drive.
I have some good news for everyone tonight. On Thursday, January 24th, the Business and Community Alliance wrapped up its coat drive to help out the victims of Hurricane Sandy. We were able to put together over 2,200 coats that we were able to get to those victims that were desperately needed. And my purpose in being here tonight is I wanted to publicly thank and acknowledge the Amens High School Key Club for their involvement in this coat drive. They were instrumental not only in the sorting of the coats, but also the planning and the promotion of the coat drive, and I wanted to make sure that they got the credit that is due to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. That being all of the requests to address the board I have this evening, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion, please? Second. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Ms. Donches.
Yes, I have any one request for a change, please. This is toward the end, where speaking of me saying, she asked if there was an environmental reason for walking, and I thought it could be better cited as she asked if being a walking school was ever part of an application for being a junior school.
I don't recall the lead school being mentioned in your comments, but that's what we, we've got. Any objection to the minutes that way? Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes are approved as amended. The next item that we have is the report of superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Want to report on a couple items tonight, give the board an update on enrollment as we enter the budget season. I think it's very important given the size of where we are. As of last week, we have 8,007, 8,078 students in the district. That's up 32 since the beginning of the school year. Elementary population, K-5, is 3,579. That's up 16 since August 29th. For middle school, now at 1,978. That's up 29 since the beginning of the school year. And high school is now at 2,521, and they have lost 13 students since the beginning of the school year. So keep an eye on that. And of course, as we reported multiple times about the school year, our special ed population is still climbing. I know there's a lot of concern about changing the school calendar. We're going to wait for a couple weeks until we see what the weather shakes out, but at this point, we're probably going to add day makeup days at the end of the school year in June, if we have some time that's available. I'd rather not get into, run into changing holidays around, and welcome back to the board sometime in March, would recommend. Also, I want to remind the board that we do work with our holidays, especially when it comes to LCTI. And we constantly update each other every two weeks or every three weeks when we have our meetings, to make sure that we're all in sync, so we don't put stress on LCTI trying to have a school day look less than 50% of the population. Last week, I was honored to attend Skills USA competition at the Allentown Agroplex, a building, and I'm here to tell you tonight that students from Amens High School did fine in the competition. Kane Morrison finished first in automated manufacturing technology. Anthony Granato finished third place in automated service specialization. Lake Dool finished third in collision repair technology. Amanda Benikoff finished first in commercial baking. Corey Savasky finished third in criminal justice. Francis Santiago finished third in first aid CPR. Brandon Hudek finished first in masonry. Randy O'Brien finished first in nurse assisting. Caitlin Benikoff finished second in restaurant service. And Zach Reed Ziegler finished second in welding. So congratulations to all of our Amens High School students who part of Skills USA. They'll be moving on to the next level of competition. We have some good news, too. Dr. Muir and Willow Lane, and the Willow Lane Garden was featured in a publication put out by Walden University. I'll pass this around. Nice article, Dr. Muir, has public relations about the good work that you're doing with our STEM project at Willow Lane. So I'll just pass this around. It was marked. Oh, here we are. Building a community garden by Tony Morris. So here we go. Congratulations. Also, a good news, one of our teachers at Lincoln, excuse me, Brian Spencer was recently published, so congratulations to Brian, fourth grade teacher at Lincoln, and it's a wonderful thing to get your book published. I'll pass that around, and it's nice to have people recognizing the news. I guess I should say something about the governor's budget. I'm reluctant to say too much, other than it's, it is what it is. One of the things I think I'd like to remind the board and the public, there's been a lot of talk about state aid funding levels. So I'll remind you that. When I came to this district in December 2007, state legislature, which adopted by action in 2005, the cost of the outstanding, I want to remind you folks that in year 2007, based on our enrollment at that time of 7,921 students, we were actually behind $2,031 per student. So you do the math, $16 million deficit, what the Auburn Book Association projected and what was happening in East Penn. So I can honestly tell you that we have not made up that differential in the governor's budget. One way of looking at this is to also keep in mind, and I don't think it would be wise for people looking at this governor's budget in a one-year fashion, got to look at the total of three years of government orbit. And even if we go ahead and get the $306,000 that's now projected, and I'll talk about that in a moment, that still would still put us behind $1,563,000, behind where we were in 2010, 2011. I'll repeat that again, $1,563,000, still behind where we received state funding two years ago. And I think that's an incredibly important number. And by the way, if we look at the county, Lehigh County, and the total for all of our school districts, we're down as a collective group, and over $10 million in state funding in that same period of time. So I think you have to keep that in mind as we go forward. I'm not going to weigh too heavily tonight, because I think there's a lot of politics that has to take place. Other than I can tell you, here's the news, this is certainly what Mr. Lances and I, we're not going to put it down, the state aid is budget at this point. I don't think there's anything that we can hang our hat on that's definite. Everything in the governor's budget is based on something else. It's if and then, and I think you folks can understand that. So I think there's a lot of work that has to be done by the governor, certainly a lot of work that has to be done by the legislature. One of the things I'm concerned about, and I'm going to say it again tonight, my mantra this year, my mantle has been special ed funding. Just want to give you a nuance, why you have to read the fine print in this governor's budget. It's not saying we're going to be, Elvin was in special ed funding. Well, that's sort of true. What the governor's doing is taking about $10 million from everyone's allocation and bumping up contingency funds. What do I mean by contingency funds? Every year, Dr. Carrick puts in an application. Last year, I think it was erosion for $9 million, I mean $900,000. We got about $150,000. So he's going to up that pool, but that's not new money. We're going to actually see one-half, 1% decrease in our special ed aid. And at a time when our enrollment in special ed is going up, I find this unacceptable. Again, I'd ask you from the outset, this is something, as a group, we could adopt of asking Mr. McKenzie, Senator Brown, Senator Meach, to really weigh in and really look at, at special ed funding, how it's handled. I think it's time. This would be the sixth year, the sixth year, and I don't mind being a quote-unquote morning call. I like to highlight that, that element of the governor's budget. The rest of the stuff is all politics, I'm not going to get into it tonight. The pension issue, the county village block grant is going to be funded, the pathway, what's that called, passport for learning, that's all tied to liquor store operations. So there's not much I can report on in terms of definite finance, other than I think Mr. Ballard will have something to say at some point about that. But we're going to be vigilant, we're still going to work diligently on our budget, try to bring in the most responsible figure we can, but we're not going to be putting a dime at this state aid in the budget. One of the things we promised you that we would look at and give you some information on, Mr. Moam is not here tonight, and my preference would be that you distribute this tonight, take a look at, and we'll happily discuss it with you next weekend as webcasting. What we, what you have, we're giving you tonight, are three options. We always like to give the board options. And I'm not going to go through each one of the proposals for you. How about if we do this? If you look it over, and we'll have Mr. Ritter and Mr. Moam, Mr. Lancy be able to respond to your questions next board meeting. There are three different options.
Dr. Seidenberger, you only got one.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. No, there's just too, sorry. Is there a plane that Mr. can? One more, please? Here we go. I knew we counted them out, but I guess my hands are a little too much on one side. Yeah, that's coming around. Okay, and that's coming around, that's coming around. Next. So look at it, there's three options for you, consideration. Also, I think it's important to get a reading on what's going on, and so we gave you a listing, and we have a group that takes board meetings. We actually have a number of how many people check that out, that's listed for you. And then we also want to give you a copy of the statewide survey that school boards does, and I think you can look at how many districts, only 5% are involved in any kind of webcasting at all. So I want you to keep that in mind as you consider these proposals, but we'll be happy to talk to you about them at the next board meeting. Take your time, look at them over. If you want to hear this question ahead of time, that would be great. That way we won't waste time, and we can get right into your issues. One of the things that now the board has taken action... One of the things that now the board has taken action on giving us some direction with the budget, thought it's important that we put together some budget goals, and so I'm just gonna take a moment. And I think having budget goals are very important because as we get into the nitty-gritty and we get into some discussions about the budget, I always think we can keep the discussions open and honest if we have some goals that we can measure our conversations about. So one of the things I'm gonna recommend tonight, and at least this from our staff viewpoint, is we're gonna look at this budget, five overriding goals, five primary goals. Number one, to develop a budget that's educationally sound, fiscally prudent. I've been using that language, this is the twenty-fifth year I've been using that language, and I learned it from my mentor, Bob LaFrenkie. I loved it when I was thirty-one years old, and I love it now. I think that's a goal of any superintendent, any, any way of education, develop a budget educationally sound, fiscally prudent. I think another thing that's really important in this day and age is to maintain fiscal flex, fiscal flexibility and the ability to adapt to external factors that may impact the overall budget. That's a nice way of saying the governor's budget. Three, to improve all, to improve the overall efficiency of the school district. I mean, once again, we ran remarkable growth in how we've curbed utility costs, we're looking at all ends of our operations that we have. I know last year, I missed the board meeting with Dr. Torna, gave you a list of all the savings we've done over the years, and I'm providing with that list, give you an update. I think we've done a, a really an outstanding job in looking at the operation and trying to be more efficient. Fourth goal is to be able to adjust the organization to meet the man, demands of funded and unfunded state and federal mandates. We noticed in the governor's budget, there's gonna be a mandate, a mandate to leak. I don't know what that means, we're waiting for more information. If it makes sense and we qualify, we'll certainly try to get some mandate waivers. And the last goal is to, and I think really important for this community, and I can tell you, as a superintendent, I walked around the school buildings, I talked to parents, this is number one thing they're concerned about, that's to maintain all existing academic and instructional programs in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year. So those are our goals, and I break it down, have some organizational goals that we want to get accomplished next year, curriculum, stature development goals, which are very important. We have a lot of changes coming next year. Keystone exams are upon us, the Common Core standards are coming our way. We're looking at digital material, we wanna get our K-12 curriculum cycle back in order. So a lot of things going on. Facility goals, we have talked a lot about that, we still have three goals in that area. Continue our energy savings programs, perform appropriate facility improvements, you'll hear more about that as we get into the budget process. And to adequately fund the maintenance budget so that routine work, like have you done, to keep all facilities in good working order. The old frame off, maybe now, maybe later. Technology goals, we've come a remarkable way since I've come to this district in two thousand and seven, but there's still a lot of work to be done, and we need to finish our basic refresh program. We still have computers in this district that are two thousand and four vintage. And so with the constriction and the arresting of spending technology, we need to truly look at that budget and see if we can get some more things done. We're excited about mobile applications, one of the things we're gonna talk about tonight, parents and real estate agents in their future will be able to get a handheld application. You're gonna move into the area, be able to type in your prospective address and see among other things that your child's gonna be bussed about. So we're very close to doing it. And we're gonna continue with the, the outset, Mr. Mo and his staff put together for this. And then obviously, the work on community relations, which we think are very important. So those are our overriding budget goals, I think it was important that you, that you have those as we move forward. And I wanna spend some time tonight, let me ask you, looking at transportation. The last year of the budget process, I think it was March twenty-seventh, it's in our board minutes, it was covered by the local press. I talked about looking at transportation from top to bottom, and this is still gonna be a hot topic, not only here but elsewhere. So that in mind, I gave you an outline for the Christmas holidays as to what my staff and I were gonna put together. And I can say this, this information did not exist in one, in one place. People might, might criticize us for that, that's okay, we accept it. Now, we spent a lot of time, and now we have a lot of information, and I would suspect that, now that we have a template for doing this, we'll be able to keep the board, and the public informed what's going on with transportation from now forward. I certainly wanna thank lots of members of my staff for really working diligently to complete this transportation study. You know, my last district, we hired a group from New York State, paid about twenty-five thousand dollars. So we didn't spend twenty-five thousand dollars, but I can tell you, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars worth of time. I know myself, this has consumed me and my, Mr. Burso, and thank you for putting up with my frustrations over the last six, seven weeks and putting this report together. But I certainly wanna thank Mrs. Kristen Campbell for her work, she did an amazing job looking at, at especially Lincoln and Jefferson Elementary Schools, what we're doing there. I wanna thank Mr. Lancy, works for the transportation department directly, Debbie Sertelwall again, for looking at our numbers and checking over our numbers, can't do things without business office being involved. And Jim Frank, you don't see much, you know, but Jim Frank is a numbers wizard, we thank him for his work. Dr. Mirabala, thank you very much, I mean, you're always there if it's a matter of student issues. Just wanna tell you, Dr. Mirabala and Mrs. Campbell actually went out in cars and double-checked addresses, addresses, and I wanna thank them for their personalized attention in looking at elements of this report. Mr. Moan's done a fabulous job, and we're gonna get into the report that transition to VersaTran wasn't the smoothest in the world. Remember, we don't own it, we do not own VersaTran, that is owned by First Duke, so I'm being polite by saying we had to intervene, and it went a lot in that process, but Michael and his staff did an amazing job of getting some data out there running. Certainly Mrs. Loyce for her work on compiling statistics specifically with Will Lane Transportation on a daily basis, looking at stats that we've put together. So maybe it was without saying, it's very self for all the work you've done. And then we had Mrs. Nina Skinner, you haven't met her yet, she's Dr. Forma's rec, technical assistant, and you know, all the charts in the appendix, Ms. Skinner, Mrs. Skinner developed those, and we really wanna thank her. And Nina Evans, again, the person you don't see, is in charge of our centralized registration, she works over I R. We brought her on staff about three or four years ago when we felt we needed someone in house, she had worked previously for Laylaw, and came over to us shortly after First Duke took over. So with that in mind, all the sections are listed for you in an index, we have an appendix, we have a list of tables, we think this is a comprehensive report, but I will certainly invite the board, if you have questions to give tonight or tomorrow, I'll try to answer them for you. The public, I'll assure you that this report will be on our website tomorrow morning. Let me, with that, let me weigh in and start with, where's it all begin? Well, you gotta begin with transportation regulations, state guidelines. There's something a lot of people just don't understand, there is no requirement in state of Pennsylvania for public schools to transport any student. Say that again. There is no requirement for any district, public school district in Pennsylvania to transport students. That's permissive. I like to bring forward my old New Jersey term, and it's called courtesy busing. So we can all agree that moving forward everything in this district basically is courtesy busing, with the exception of two points. Not me, and here's another, I'm gonna rail on, I, I just can't pass this up. We're obligated to transport charter school kids, not obligated to transport kids of Pennsylvania spent school district, but we're obligated to transport charter school kids. That's by law. It is what it is. And you wonder why I think that law ought to be really looked at from top to bottom, just one of my pet peeves. Also, if the student has written in his or her individualized education plan as I E P, we provide transportation, we do that. So those are the three requirements for us to transport any student in this district. The board should also understand that the one point five miles is not a barrier, it is a distance from child's doorstep to the school. It's one point five or more, if the district transports that student, we get reimbursement for that student. If the student lives within that one point five miles, the district is not qualified for reimbursement for that child. It's very clear. Now, there are exceptions, and that being if a child lives along hazardous road, or there's some other mitigating circumstance like railroad tracks, no sidewalks, things of that ilk, then we could claim that child and we could get reimbursement. Those numbers are audited every two years by the state department. So let's just take a capsule look at where we are right now on page six of this report. Here's what we have. Albertis, three hundred and fifty-two kids in the school, hundred and ninety-one ride the bus, fifty-four point three percent of kids in Albertis ride. Jefferson, two hundred and eighty-four kids in the school, one sixty ride, fifty-six point three percent of the kids ride the bus. Lincoln, four point, four hundred and seventeen to forty-six, so fifty-nine percent, people got it? Yes?
Are these numbers of actual riders, or are these people that are in positions that are compelled to ride?
They're actual riders. They're actual riders on our, on our roster.
Okay. This is Dr. Seidman, I think what Ms. Dr. Barker was asking was, are these, is this the peak, the, the number of students who are enrolled, who are entitled to busing, or is this the number we actually see on the buses each day?
This is the number we see on the buses each day. We're gonna, we're gonna break it down by components a little later, okay? So if you ask me, how many kids are being bused in the district? This is the roster of students that we are now currently busing. McCunche, four seventy-eight, four sixty-six, ninety-seven point five percent of the students are bused. And I think, Amy, close your eyes and you can understand why, where McCunche's located. Same thing for Shoemaker, the same thing with Westfield, in the high nineties. Shoemaker, ninety-six point nine percent, Westfield's all ninety-seven point eight percent. Will Lane, seven hundred and thirty-nine students, six hundred and eighty-one get busing right now, ninety-two point two percent of the students are bused at Will Lane. And then we thought we would include the middle school and the high school, well, higher, ninety-six point five percent of students are bused. Lower McCunche Township, uh, Lower McCunche Middle School, ninety-eight point six, Imes High School, seventy-eight point two. So that's the basic roster. Now, I think, Mr. Barker, perhaps we can start grading students. And so on table two, well, one of the things we wanted to give you an indication, okay, in that range, one point five miles and within, how many students do we bus within that distance? In other words, you measure one point five to school, to school. So how many kids within that, that, that very important range do we now bus? Albertis, only sixteen kids, which is eight point three, eight percent, and we have checked each one of those sixteen kids, and I can tell you, there's a mitigating reason why each one of those sixteen kids is bused. We went out and we checked. Same thing with Jefferson. Ninety-three, it's hundred and forty-nine, hundred and forty-nine kids are bused within one point five miles, and we can tell you, and we checked out just about, every one of those kids is about twenty, and we're not quite sure, maybe less, and we're gonna refer to that in our report in a moment. McCunche, hundred and seventy-four, that's thirty-seven percent of all the kids riding within that one point five miles, but again, you take a look at McCunche, there's no sidewalks. Westfield's, the same thing, two hundred and sixty-nine. And Will Lane, four hundred and fifty-eight kids that were now busing live within one point five miles at school, which is sixty-seven percent of their riders. Really, it's not applicable to I R, Lower McCunche Middle School, and Imes High School because there's this two miles, but again, if we're looking at transportation at I R within two, two miles, it's hundred and ninety-two. Lower McCunche Middle School, two twenty-three. Imes High School, hundred and forty students. Now, one of the things that we heard, parent conversations come up to the podium, and we do listen. So one of the things we wanted to present to you tonight was, if we would look at a sliver of distance, point seven five miles to one point five miles, what would that look like? What would that mean in terms of numbers of students? So the board would say, let's just say the board would say, all right, we're gonna change, instead of one point five, you'd have a guideline, we're gonna now change to point seven five. What would that mean? That would mean that twenty students that now are not bused in Albertis would be eligible for busing based on point seven five to one point five. Okay? Everybody okay with that? And Jefferson, twelve youngsters. Lincoln, nine. Will Lane, three hundred and forty-one. So those are the numbers, and you don't have to worry, we're gonna come back and talk about that at the end of the board. But we wanted to compile that information for you. Table four, I'm not gonna go over this item by item, but basically, these are numbers off our state reports. So last year, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we're on page eight now, we, there were six thousand one hundred and thirty students that we transported along non-hazardous roads, and then one thousand two hundred and twenty-two kids along hazardous roads. Eight hundred and fifty-nine, those kids were non-public, and then total, total numbers of students we transported last year in the district, eight thousand two hundred and eleven, and that includes kids from St. Anne's, seven generations, so forth and so on. Of that number, of that number, eight thousand two hundred and eleven, four hundred and sixty-six do not qualify for state reimbursement. But I think if you look at the numbers, starting from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, I mean, it's a story, it's, it's an easy story to understand. Will Lane, we had no other schools being developed in that period of time, Will Lane. And that's why that number is so big. And we don't get a dime of reimbursement for four hundred and sixty-six students that are transported, so within that one point five miles. All right. Something else you're, you might wanna be informed about are charter school transportation, charter schools. Just look at the number, starting in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we started off transporting twenty-eight students, charter schools outside of district. Haven't gone up that much, only thirty-three outside of district, but seven generations, now we're transporting a hundred and ten within this district. So in a five-year period, we've gone to twenty-eight, one forty-three in terms of transporting charter school students. And again, we're obligated to transport them. Here's what's going on with St. Anne's in seven generations now. Let me explain. These numbers are only for students who live in the boundaries of East Penn School District. And not all students in St. Anne's, only those students who live within our district boundaries. Same thing for seven gen. So of a hundred and eighty-nine kids that live here in East Penn, in the ten St. Anne's, we transport one seventy-three. And seven generations, a hundred and thirty-eight kids in ten, seven generations, we transport one twenty-two. So you can see those percentages. Now, I've heard that word, parents, and I did say that last time, but looking, one of the requirements that you'll find a nuance in state law, is we don't even have to provide non-public transportation. What if we do? We could follow the same rules. And we can limit transportation charter schools to that one point five, while the board guideline, the board must have set. So if we were to, I'm just saying, if, if the board were to move that one point five, point seven five, we would have to do that for saying would have to do that for St. Anne's and Seven Generations as well. So what would that necessitate? There it is. We would have to then transport 13 kids to St. Anne's that we don't have to do right now and pick up 20 in Seven Generations that we don't do right now. Okay? So 20 out of 27 Seven Generations kids would fall between 0.75 and 1.5 miles. That means there'd be seven. And trust me, we've gone out and we've looked at addresses and we're gonna see a recommendation later on in the appendix report. Already had a conversation with Principal St. Anne's, and I've already met with Mr. Gordon, who's the interim CEO of Seven Generations. And I know, later, though, we're gonna have another conversation sometime this spring about transportation for those two schools. And by the way, I wanted to assure the board and the community that when I say we've gone out in cars and we've looked at certain addresses, there are some, there are some students we're transporting to Jefferson, and I'll be the first one to tell you, nobody has, you can't give you a good reason. But it's reasonable to sit down with Mrs. Scalzo and probably some parents sometime this spring and explain that. We can't see it. So we're probably gonna make an adjustment there. 15, 20 kids, Mrs. Campbell's somewhere in the neighborhood, we've gone out then. Sometimes things happen, sometimes they don't, but this is, we audit our own stuff and so. But I think we're okay in Lincoln. We checked out every one of those kids in Lincoln. Lincoln checks out. Albertus knows too. One of the things we wanted to talk to you about was special education. So I'm not gonna go through the numbers, but those are the numbers there for you, starting with 2009, 2010, and 2012, 2013. See, last year, we spent $637,627 on special ed transportation. Same thing with vehicles. Right now, we're using 2009, 2010, we had 22 mini buses and one van for special ed. Now, we have one full bus, 20 mini buses, and one van. And the cost of those vehicles, $771,000. One of the things we wanted to do in the next section was look at transportation costs. And so we wanted to break down the figures for you so you have a pretty good handle on of what elements there are of transportation costs. So we have a listing for you, public school gas, public school contract, non-public gas, non-public contract, district activity, once people wanna know, okay, so what is it, possibly your, like, your sports teams and clubs? There it is. And then total cost. So our actual total cost, we're budgeting this year $5.3 million for transportation this year. We're gonna get into net cost in a moment. Also, the next page on table 11, we thought we'd further break down transportation costs for you. Contract, East Penn staff, that's Mrs. Emmens, last person we had before she became an employee to be contracted with her for a period of time, now she's an employee. And again, I'm not gonna go through every one of the line items, but if you look at our budget, that's what we're spending in each one of those categories for transportation. Again, you can look at this at your leisure. Table 12, for student bus fees without aids or fuel costs. This is based on a contract. And so what we did was we put basically down a per pupil cost for just for the first student contract. Not full enchilada, but just per pupil cost. And so this year, we budgeted $183.23 for each kid that's on a 72-passenger bus. Mini bus, $143.79, and so forth and so on. A kindergarten bus is a half run, if you can imagine. So that's the per pupil cost, without fuel, without all the other costs, just based on the first student contract. On page 12, we have a calculation for fuel. We're estimating that a full two-tiered bus run, our buses, I'll explain, they're in a two-tiered system, which means they go out to high school, middle school run, and then they circle back and do an elementary run. If they would only do one run, that's called one-tier bus. So when a bus goes out and does two runs, we're estimating for a year, it's $5,160 per, for a bus, for cost of fuel for the year. And so when we do our budgeting, and we do our cost analysis for this study, we're estimating that for a 72-passenger bus, it's worth, and then that includes fuel, $38,543.73 a year. And then $31,000, some change for a 48-passenger bus. That's for two tiers, a bus only does one swing through, it's $19,71, uh, $271, and then $15,000 change for 48-passenger buses. Any questions on that? Now, as we did mention, we get state subsidies. So again, we thought we would break it out for you. When Mrs. Sertelaw, Mr. Frank, Mr. Lancy submit state reports, we get subsidies, this is what we have to account to the state department. These are the figures that we get. So for instance, last year, now the right-hand corner there, we got $1,763,206 on the state department to help offset our local cost of transportation. And there are all the categories, non-public aid ratio, calculation, hazardous road, so forth and so on. So again, full accounting of how we get transportation. We also have to calculate, for the calculations, what's happening, market value and market, market value, aid ratio, and that's the, and those are the figures there that go into our state subsidy calculation. So at the end of the year, in the last year, when we net out state subsidies and our actual costs, this is what it costs this school district to transport kids. $4,828,343, I'll repeat that again, $4,828,343 dollars to transport all those students, in district kids, St. Anne's, charter school kids, out of district, non-public, out of district private students. That's the tab last year. Okay, section six, we listed the amount of vehicles we're using now, 86 72-passenger buses, 39 48-passenger buses, seven special education vans. Total vehicles, 132 vehicles that are moving every day to transport kids. Total number of routes, whether it's buses, one tier or two-tier, we have a total of 333 routes that we structured this year. 96 non-public routes. That's a lot. Think about it. That means we're, so you count, here we're taking Alton Town Central Catholic, St. Joseph's in Portfield, Arabian Academy, we have a student goes to Bethune Catholic, we have a student goes to Notre Dame, we have kids that go to LCPI, we have kids that go to Port Yoma School, Hill School, so those are the kids that we transport. So people should be aware of that. We have 21 routes that go to LCPI, that's a good thing. 21 routes. Charter schools, there are 26 different routes that we send to transport kids to charter school. And then yes, we are responsible for transporting all our students. So we have five routes to transport all the students. So as a grand total, 481 routes. Now, one of the things that, and again, when we're fully transparent with you, and I'm gonna talk about this next item in my recommendations, but nonetheless, you ask us, how does First Student go about assigning kids to the bus? Here's the formula, Dr. Union, that they're using right now. And you don't have to wait because one of my recommendations is I'll be taking a look at, at this methodology that they currently use. Right now, for 72-passenger bus, they're scheduling, not, not everyone, because you're gonna see different numbers, but they use a guideline of 60 kids. And that case, it's only 83 percent capacity. So we're a little nervous about that. Also, for a middle school bus, bigger kids, not considered free to receive, they're looking at, again, an average of 45, which is only a 63 percent utilization rate. And a high school, they're looking at 36 kids, which is only 50 percent capacity rate. So again, this is an area that we're probably gonna pay a look at and you'll hear one of my recommendations. Section seven, one of the things we tried to do a couple of years ago, 2009, to be precise, we start looking at all of our small team club activities. And we were starting to feel the pinch of running vans, like to take the golf team, take the tennis team, maybe our robotics teams, maybe some kids in, well, in academic competitions on history day. We were paying big bucks to the first student and to some private rental car. So one of the things we, Mr. Lancy did a cost analysis, we went out, we bought three district vans, and our goal was to have pay those off in three years, which we have. And now, all those, all those activities that we used to rent, we now have a district called vehicle, and we're saving all that money. So we're very happy about the use of the vans. And I'm not gonna throw it in. Of course, if you wanna see what each trip was, we have that information, but as you can see, we use the vans greatly. That's just this year. I mean, it's no surprise that our COVID hasn't heightened. Sports seasons, our golf team, our tennis teams are out there, so we use these vans a lot. And we have three of them. So there's some big savings there. Next section, we told you that we would report to you on the status of our contract with First Student. We're in the fourth year of a five-year contract, next year, my stomach's recommendation, we're gonna go out for a bid, take a look at those services. But here's some things that board should be aware of. We, not First Student, we control the routes. We have final say on how many routes that we want, number of buses that are in use, and we have the ultimate last say on what we think is required to meet our needs. And so that's one of the things I'm gonna strongly take a look at and exercise our administrative control over what goes on. And I think having Versitrans could allow us to do a better job of that. We're very thankful to First Student that they worked with us on purchasing Versitrans. But I will tell you this, Dad, we were a little disappointed in shifting the data from Edgelock to Versitran, we, we, trying to find the applied words, we interme, that's a nice word, we interme, and we felt that we had to build the databases from scratch. And thanks to Mr. Muller and Mr. Baravella, and lots of people who took place in our department at Evans validating numbers. And so I can tell you that as of today, our data is good. What we're not finished with yet, which is somewhat disappointing, but I think maybe when I share this with you, you'll understand. Again, in the transition from Edgelock to Versitran, hazardous roads. Some people inputted that using memory as opposed to certified list from PENDO. Also, what we found out in our study is that Edgelock school boundaries were never updated when we did redistricting about three or four years ago. So now, we are in a painstaking process of using GPS systems to recalculate all the school boundaries. And the good news is we're almost done. We don't wanna, what I wanted to do tonight was show you some of our apps, but I don't wanna put anything on the score that's inaccurate, but we will come back and show you when the boundaries are done. The work that we've seen really looks very interesting, we wanted to show you happened tonight, distances is 0.75 to 1.5, things like that. But we still have a little bit of work to do on actually going down the streets to making sure the boundaries are absolutely correct. And we just wanna make sure it's right. And we spent a lot of time on that. But I want to publicly thank Jennifer Key from First Student Group. She works in Montana, and she has been wonderful to work with, spent countless hours with us on the phone, Michael Monson in past cities, in Belgium. And so I think with all the time we've spent in the last month or so, you won't be disappointed with the pride. Next section, hazardous roads, as I mentioned, rather than getting so, in the appendix, we had the latest list we were able to get. People from PENDO, entering District 5-0, they were kind enough to send us the list, and these are the official list, and they're in a back three. And when they were approved by PENDO, and in a land besides, only PENDO can designate a road hazardous, that's out of our grade, they can do that. So that's the list, the current list. And I'll tell you this, there's a little sliver at Lowellane, just a little bit, around the bend, you walk to the top, past the school, around the corner, there's a small sort of about four or five. Tom Baravella went out and actually counted the homes, and we, we were out there visibly, about four homes, right? Four homes that are validated, that would be considered dangerous sort of around Lowellane. Last year, we worked with super dense in business, I mean, transportation coordinators from other school districts. The effort continues. Unfortunately, because of the widespread of non-public schools, we just were not able to do much. Our goal was to consolidate routes to see if we could have some of these pending kids hopping a parking lot, and vice versa, and we just were not able to do that to any great degree, not to any degree, all right? But we will continue to do the work. Now, gonna get into some, I think, real business of what you wanna talk about tonight, that cost. We said that we would provide for you some cost analysis. The first one we wanna look at, say the board became very magnanimous, and decided that we don't wanna have a dispute with any parent anywhere, or have us all, or elementary kids. So you might ask, how much does that cost? On chart, on table 16, page 17, this is our best estimate based on accurate numbers now of students. And so here's where all the calculations that we showed you before, $183 per day, 182 student days, the bus cost, the fuel cost. And so if you were to say, starting, let's say, in August next year, we're gonna bus every kid in this district, what would it cost you to do that? So we believe that would, you'd have to bus another 161 kids in Albertus, the total cost is about $38,466. Jefferson, I'm sorry, it's about $43,000 for Albertus, it's two passenger, 272-passenger buses and 148-passenger bus. They're listed for you, item lines there for you, it's about 43, uh, 44,000. Jefferson, we would need two 72-passenger buses, it's about $38,000. Lincoln, 171 kids, about $57,000 to bus all the kids. Shoemaker, just a couple kids, 23, that would be about $15,000. Lowellane, about 33 kids, we're rounding 12 now, so again, that's about $15,000. So grand total, under $81,000 to bus every kid in the district now. We have not made a commitment with Lower McCunchee Township, I've had conversations with Mr. Fosselman, we have not agreed to anything. But being fully transparent, if there would be a shared cost for crossing cars, I'm sorry, if we were to extend, uh, extend the courtesy, I'm sorry, I'm a little ahead of myself, if we were to extend the courtesy that of busing all students, we'd have If we were to extend the courtesy that of busting all students, we'd have to extend that courtesy to St. Anne's in seven generations. And that would be another thirty-one thousand dollars to do that. So the grand total, to transport every elementary kid in this district next year, and St. Anne's in seven generations, will be two hundred and twelve thousand dollars next year.
Dr. Seidberg, just so I understand, this is what would it cost if we took the students we are not transporting today?
That's right. And did, and say, we're gonna put up a big tent, everybody's in the tent. Every kid's entitled to a seat on the bus. So that'd cost the board two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to do that. Now, let's talk about Willow Lane. Start with, this year, we returned most of the students to transportation, but except for people in Randy line two. Our calculation, by not transporting those thirty-three students, you save approximately fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars this year by not transporting those thirty-three students. It's listed for one pass, forty-eight passenger bus, savings in fuel, so that's the grand total. I think you heard some speakers talk tonight about Lower McCounche Township. I too wanna echo Mrs. On, I think it was. We've told you all along, we've had a great relationship with Lower McCounche Township. Mr. Fossil and I worked well together. We had a great relationship when he was the borough manager in MS. And we continue that relationship. We most recently met with Lower McCounche Township officials, February first. Mr. Erdman was there, who's the engineer for the township, along with Mr. Suezak, who was our engineer. Told you that they don't have any problems with what plans we're having, we're gonna get those in a couple of moments. I can tell the board and the public that they've almost finalized where they're going to put their flashing signals, what they're gonna do with the crosswalks, and where they're gonna place crossing guards. And I do not wanna steal that, I don't think it's appropriate to me to make that announcement. We'll certainly get it to you as soon as the township finalizes their discussions. But I want everyone in this room to understand that those conversations have never been to any degree of animosity and anger at all. They've been above board, they've been cooperative, they've been collaborative. And I wanna thank everyone from Lower McCounche Township, including state police representatives, and I think there's been three state police officers who have given us their opinion about safety issues. So everyone of those, I think we've had four or five now since the summer, and even before that. So I do wanna take my hat off to Lower McCounche Township. Now, I'm perplexed when I hear people say they don't know what we're going to do internally. We think, that was all laid out in the lockability study. There are three main things, and Dr. Miravella, Mr. Lancy, you're free to jump in, and I won't mind. Three main things that we're gonna be doing to what we think will improve traffic throughout Willow Lane. And let me be very clear. Whatever the board does, whatever decision you make on transporting students, is my strongest recommendation that you do, that you do, and allow us to do the site improvements to Willow Lane. One of the things you're gonna see later on, we did a car count. Unanticipated outcomes. We looked at cars over a period of time, there's an average of a hundred thirty-four vehicles that drop off kids every day. That's with almost, what, ninety-two percent of kids being bused at this point? So it's a considerable amount of students that got dropped off there every day. Also, in working with the township, there's been almost what they want, I'm concerned about, what happens if there's an emergency? Fire trucks have to get out on that shared driveway, while parents are backed up dropping kids off. So for that reason, we're strongly recommending that we take our, the work that we're gonna present, and do it. We think it makes sense, I think the township agrees with us. And I think it's in the interest of our parents, township staff, to make those changes. The number one change is, instead of parents driving, the main interest of the school, they're now going to accommodate a school off Mill Creek. Well, we've talked about that in the Centennial study. Now along with that, there's a pathway that we're gonna relocate. You know, on the next page, we'll do all the costs for you, all the estimates, every item that we think is gonna have to be done, and it's all laid out for you. The final piece is to then look at making some wider bus turn areas in front of the school. So the buses will come in off the main entrance, turn left, drop the students off, and make a turn. We're gonna have to increase or improve the turnaround radius of those buses. So with that in mind, and then there's some others minor signage that we're gonna have to put in, plus a traffic gate that will not allow parents to, they wanna take a shortcut, a little road between the school and firehouse, and somebody will take a shortcut, allow that way. They're gonna have to go out, Mill Creek, and turn it away. Will I add anything to that? Mr. Mir, Dr. Miravella? Now, we have presented all those plans and drawn a form to the township. Mr. Erdman's looked at those, just a couple of classifications. But what would it cost to do everything I just talked about? Next page, page nineteen, complete listing. Eighty-nine thousand dollars for the base bid, and about ninety-two hundred for some alternates. Now, our recommendation is if we do this work, that we draw the funds out of our capital reserve, because that's what capital reserve funds are, thereby having no impact on our operating budgets. As you, as you know, capital and operating budget are two different budgets. So that's what we would recommend that you do, whether the board buses the kids or not. We just think it's the right thing to do. Again, three years into the school, unintended consequences, I don't think anyone envisioned. Now, the best laid plan sometimes can be changed. And I think this is a reflection of what it is. Any questions?
Was the end of your report on the transportation study where you?
Oh, no, I'm ready, there's more to go. So what, okay, one of the things we, we wanted to do was look at the amount of traffic coming into that school. Again, we have one of our district supervisors, there's a base list, there's accounts. Strange why it went down in January, we don't know any help for that. But certainly, I don't think anybody can squawk about wintertime, these aren't spring numbers. And so there's an average of a hundred thirty-four cars going onto that campus every day now. One of the things we wanted to look at was also, I think someone asked us a question of why do you, why do your bus drivers keep me a headcount? Well, we wanted to see, you know, a hundred thirty-four cars dropping off kids. Doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that. There are probably a lot of parents who aren't using the bus. So we wanted to look at, what's the participation rate? And so there we have the list of forty, bus seven, forty, fifty-five. The only one we've asked for is one thirty-four in bus four. They, they have a high percentage of participation, because they come to the daycare. We provide transportation, it was a very nice district. If you are a parent, you're well taken care of in this district. We transport the kids to daycare. Not everybody does that, but we do. In fact, that's one of the reasons why we worked out the deal with Cambridge. The municipal parents have a place to take kids, their, their children to when we moved into Willow Lane. So I think those percentages are fascinating. So again, there's nobody explaining what you have in front of you. Bus number seven, and again, we go through the appendix, we will tell you what kids are, what neighbors the bus service. But we have sixty-eight kids assigned to that bus, on the average, daily, thirty-nine kids ride that bus. Forty, bus forty, sixty-nine kids assigned, on the average, thirty-nine point four kids ride that bus every day. And so forth and so on down. Least amount of participation is bus twenty-six, only on an average day, only fifty percent of the kids that were assigned to that bus actually ride it. And I'm gonna talk about that as I present some options to you. Curiously enough, we have a better participation rate after school. We thought it might be a little different with people having girl scouts, boy scouts, church, soccer programs, whatnot. But the overall percentage, if I, if I took all those, plus buses, seventy to twenty-six, the average is after sixty point eight for all the buses. Going home, it averages sixty-nine point five. So we have a little better participation in the afternoon. So.
Did it include the daycare option?
It did. It did. And again, in the appendix, we have listed what neighbors the buses serve. And again, you're looking at, and you gotta probably have a lot of questions, and so do we. Let me share with you the beginning of recommendations. Okay. What I'm gonna put on the table now is two options for the board to consider for Willow Lane. Two options. Of course, if someone adds another option, I'm always holding to this. All right, option one, don't be forward complaining, eliminate busting for all students to live within one point five miles of Willow Lane. Now, originally, we talked about Beaumont, Randy line early, Randy line two, Brookside Farms, and Graymore. After working with the township, and now knowing that there were two crossing guards at the intersection of Willow and Salakrout, we believe that if the board would adopt option one, that there are about another twenty-six kids that could block from Penzance Meadow and Brookfield Estates and cross, since there's gonna be two crossing guards. Originally, two years ago, three years ago, we were only thinking about one crossing guard. And that was not written down, but I can tell you we discussed that. Wasn't an issue. Just like this economy crossing guard at Willow, at Wheatland, we did not talk about that two years ago. I can test my staff and I, when we met with the township three years ago, we didn't talk about that. But now, township's got a third crossing guard there, we endorse that. Total of seven crossing guards, all the way. Now, we've heard sixty thousand banded about. Well, people wanted to know how we calculate that. Here's the calculation, and you've spent a lot of time with us. That what I told you about? Versitran dated now, we've put, we've looked at this two or three times. We think we've accounted for about ninety-eight percent of the kids. You know, there's coolings and move outs all the time. But based on the figures we gave you, the bus, the fuel, is what we think you would save if all those kids would not receive transportation. All the kids who live within one point five miles. I think the total savings would be a hundred eleven thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars. Now, this were crossing guards. Although we have not brought back the recommendation to you, Bruce and I have only talked what sort of, like, gerrys, so to speak. Now, he's floating out ideas, just 'cause he floats it out doesn't mean it's, we're gonna jump at him. But nonetheless, when we advertised, when we, the district advertised crossing guards, three years ago, we had a figure in mind, and that figure, I think, was fifteen dollars an hour, was based on the going rate that we found from the school district. Yes, we did a lot of background work three years ago. Mr. Lancy and I have friends in Gotham that do this and cross, so our districts that pay crossing guards, so they don't. At the Pearl, those, I think those people, they're all volunteers, but other districts do pay. So based on what we saw as a going rate, and one half of that, it's actually one half of that, one half of nine thousand five hundred, five hundred and fifty dollars. We think the savings, again, if you were paid for crossing guards, would amount to a hundred and two thousand dollars next year, next year's budget, if we bust. Now, option two, in my way, let me come back and talk about the tenant survey for a moment. And why nothing's happened? Well, nothing's happened because two hundred and one people pulled out the survey, forty-four. And I'm gonna say this politely, I think we mentioned that if people with duplicates surveyed, we would fine you. And I'm disappointed that there were forty-four people that pulled out duplicate surveys. Almost twenty percent of the data, in our humble opinion, we can't use. Because we don't know which, which ones are the real ones. Sadly, some people went in and may have inputted, like, they lived in Graymore one time, and the next time they put in, they lived in Brookside Farms or Brookfield Farms or some of the other schools. I don't know what possessed people to do that, but we were disappointed. So, we're gonna go ahead and redo the survey, this time we're gonna ask for names on them. I think that's the only way we can count them. We won't rely on the honor system, we'll ask people. I can give you the long and short of it, not many people are interested in carpooling, and not many people are interested in walking school buses. Surprisingly enough, we didn't have that many people on the, oh, there, there's Mr. Moyer, Dr. Miravella, Mr. Lancy on some of these issues. Not many at all, not many at all. So, we're gonna come back.
I'm sorry to interrupt, can I just ask a procedural question? No, just a procedural.
You're interrupting the proceedings. If you wanna have a question, ask Dr. Seidberg after we leave, please.
So, one of the things that, as I said before, we'll find those parents, but and they'll work with Mr. Moyer, and I forget which person we'll talk about it about. It's not gonna be some mass accident, I can tell you that. We do a good job of supervising kids, take that into consideration. It's always been part of our plan, so we'll work with, with parents. But we're gonna redo the survey and ask for names.
During that survey, you'll ask for volunteers?
Yes, we will, again. As I said before, we took two hundred and one surveys, and forty-four of them are not good. There's a second option that we're gonna put before the board tonight. And I don't wanna speak about parents for a moment, but I think it's important. And I disagree with the gentleman that stood up and said, parents from Albertis, Jefferson, Lincoln haven't come out and complained. I talk to parents, Lincoln and Jefferson, and trust me, they are paying attention, and they do talk to me. They just don't come out and complain at the board, but they do talk to me and wanna know, are we gonna get a fair shake too? Let me assure you that that has happened. That being said, one of the things that I think, well, the parents asked, okay, about point seven-five. So option two, I'm saying, here's something for the board to consider. If the board would move, would move, let's say our guideline from one point five to point seven-five, what would that mean for elementary kids across the district? Well, then I gave you a chart earlier, that there would be about, I think, twenty students from Albertis, twelve from Lincoln, what, eight from Jefferson? I've got my numbers. For the limited amount of students, our belief is that looking at the bus capacities, if we could pick up those kids from Albertis, Lincoln and Jefferson, at no additional cost, that we ought to be good enough to find places for twenty kids, twelve kids, and eight kids on our buses, especially if our capacity is not at a hundred percent. So we're saying, we're not gonna sit up here tonight and say it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars to transport an additional bunch of kids from other schools. The answer is no, we think we can do that without a cost. And that, to me, would be the right thing to do, if you would thought, option two. Option two then would be that we would then transport any students who live point seven-five miles away from the school. Now, what would that do? That would mean busing for about three hundred and thirty students at Willow Lane, that would mean about... That would mean busing for about 330 students at Willow Lane, that would mean about 125 would still walk, would still walk. And believe it or not, there would be some students at Brandywine 2, I think about two or three, that would then qualify for transportation because their home is on the extreme element of Brandywine 2. I think it's one or two homes that then would qualify for transportation. However, one of the things that I think I would strongly recommend is that Dr. Moir work with parents. When you look at the statistics that we presented on participation, seems to be a lot of parents who are not taking advantage of transportation now. So we're going to recommend that we do something with our high school students next year called will-call transportation. And I would insist that Dr. Moir work with his parents and ask in the survey, if you're not going to use transportation, we're just going to say, will you be showing courtesy to us? Tell us that that's the case. However, if something changes in your life, you get a new job, maybe you're doing something else, give us a day or two and we'll find a spot for your youngster on that bus. But I really believe that we could collapse while looking at those capacities, we could probably reduce the amount of buses that actually serve Willow Lane about two. We have it in that are options. So, let's look at option two. And again, that would mean that you would extend transportation, .75 to students in Alberta, Lincoln, and Jefferson, because that's the right thing to do. And again, St. Anne's and Seven Generation as well. But if we were to extend that to Willow Lane students, we still would reduce two 72 passenger buses, which would save $33,306. We could reduce an additional 48 passenger bus at 13,000, dual cost. And so we're saying that we estimate, even with moving to .75 to 1.5, we can still save about $54,000 next year on transportation costs for Willow Lane students. And that would lead us, again, to about 125 kids that would walk to that school.
Does that figure then include your proposal about collapsing the buses due to a will-call system?
Yes.
So the will-call system has to work in order for this one to work?
Yes. But we think, we're conscious that that's not happening.
Any questions on that? Does anyone have any questions on the two options?
Two options.
About how they work?
Yeah, let me make sure I have this straight. He wants, right institute, a will-call system at the high school and then also at the middle school or something, you cannot do a will-call system at the middle school, so you're just asking for feedback from parents to work with?
Let me, I don't want to be, let me get to my recommendations. Let me circle back to that. Because sometimes the research is, it's hard to find the right sequence. So, let me just talk about generalized recommendations and I'll come back and answer Mr. Rose's question. First recommendation is that we really need to upgrade our board policy. It's been a long, long time. And one of the things that I'm really going to recommend is that the board use words like courtesy bus. That's the first thing we certainly look at, like we're doing with the investment policy, look at some things and come back and have an updated board policy. The second thing is that we're really going to work with Principal St. Anne's and CEO of Seven Generation and sit down and explain those folks to, just because the kids attend those schools doesn't mean they ought not to get transportation. I'm embarrassed to tell you right now that we are transporting some kids above those schools, probably should not be transported. But again, instead of causing a ruckus, this year we're going to sit down with each one of those leaders and identify those students so they have plenty of time to work with those families and then so we can, we can stop that practice. And that would mean one of two things, anybody within 1.5 miles or .75. We documented, we have those kids listed, we've gone out, we've checked their addresses. And again, Seven Generation's and St. Anne's will call the bus because of railroad tracks and also Chestnut Street, but we've taken that all into consideration. Our recommendation three, and I'm going to talk about this, what we can do for Willow Lane. One of the things that, remember talking about high school buses only assigned a 50% capacity? Here we look at high school buses, a ton of them are basically empty. So, we're trying to find a little way, and I know we've talked about this multiple times, and we found some neighbors, I'm not going to identify the school district, but Mr. Rose is employed by one of them. And we have a great relationship with that empire of the north.
Shall not be named.
Shall not be named, but they're really, we've got some good, you know, and, you know, one of our verses is going from our good neighbors. One of the things they do is, this comes back to why we went, we went and proposed this for middle school. They have a much bigger parking lot than we do at my high school in years. But we would work with our seniors and have a meeting with them this spring, say, if you're going to get a parking pass, we use a paper and tell us that you're not interested in riding the bus. However, as I said before, things change in your life, you lose your car, you get in trouble, okay, so we can't give you a car anymore, we'll provide a seat for you in the bus. Give us a call, that's to find your ticket, we'll call you, we can find a space for you. If we implement a system like that, we really think we can knock off two buses next year, saving about $35,000. And I would do the same thing that with Willow Lane kids, there are parents out there, 134 cars. I'm going to bet some kids at Willow Lane who haven't been on a bus since that school, let's work, let's really work with parents, see if you're not going to use it, tell us about it, with the provision app, if you want to come back, we'll find a place where you're on a bus. And so, that's why I think we really can knock another bus off, the, off the, I think there are nine buses right now that service Willow Lane, I think we can knock them down. All right, recommendation four is that we are working, as I mentioned before, really fastidiously, of redrawing hazardous roads and hazardous boundaries. That's the only thing we don't have accurate right now in our system. And then, when we're finished, I talked to Michael, Owen, and I think we could develop an app for real estate agents, for parents, so that when you move into this district, you're going to know right away if you're going to get transportation or not. And we'll come back and show that to you, we think within a reasonable amount of time. Recommendation five, we think, here's something we haven't tried, but again, I'm going to meet with the principals of St. Anne's, Seven Generations. Right now, we have separate bus runs. We may go out to Graymore or any other development, the High Crossing, and pick up the kids from St. Anne's and Seven Generations using two different buses. Nothing at all says those kids can't ride the bus together. So one of the things that we want to look at, Ken refers to Trant, we should be able to do this a lot easier this spring. Let's run some, run, let's, let's do some simulations, let's see if we, what it'll look like, we put some Seven Generation kid, St. Anne's kid on the same bus. Now, that would mean one of them gets dropped off, but you know, back in the day, we used to relay kids' buses back in the day. You'd take them to one spot, they get off, you get on other ones. Nothing says that we have to make this cab service. Transport the kids, we'll do a good job of transporting them, just means minor convenience, they know what, here's my, here's my answer, choice, cost. That's your choice to go to Seven Generation or St. Anne's, all right? You get any busing, doesn't have to be Cadillac service, it could service, doesn't have to be Cadillac. So what's wrong if your kid runs, you have a St. Anne's kid on the same bus with a Seven Generation's kid? They're all nice kids. Don't make complaints. They're good kids. So let's see if we can do that. And then, one of the things that I've talked to Mr. Lancy about is now with VersaTran and looking at the numbers that, that first student is used, we really need to use a different variables, maybe we up into 68, 69 kids next year, and run, run some simulations, let's see if we can collapse the number of buses that we're actually using next year down to 132, just by being more efficient. Maybe we can realize some savings that way. And I think we can. If you just look at the appendix for some of the bus runs, we've got some interesting bus runs that serve Willow Lane. They're all over the place. There's got to be a better way in which we can, we can develop to make our bus runs more efficient. And again, I will tell you this, my first student took over, Laylaw, we lost all of this operational people. People that had been with this district for a long time. And the people that are now serving as the first student are not from East Ten. They're not Brutus, they're not rooted in this community. But the people we had before, Randy Williams being one of them, was now the IU director of transportation. We lost a lot when Randy left first student in UPY. So, we think we can improve that specifically. And the other thing is, we think we should go out early next year for a bus service. I think last time we did that, Mr. Legal and Mrs. Daniel did that, we had a recommendation that I think in December, we're saying that we should be able to do that again next year. So, I know it took a little bit of time tonight, but here's the elements of our transportation study. You have in the appendix listed the hazardous roads, also the indicators like bus seven serves Shepherd Hills, Broad Path West, Pennsyl, Willow Lane, and Brookfield Estates. So we're consultants and know where those buses are coming from. And then, we did the participation rate charts for you in the back, so you can really take a look at. Can I answer your question, Mr. Rose?
I'm not absolutely sure. When we, when we try to do this, this has been found to be a legal approach.
Yes, because we're not saying we're no longer going to transport. Parents have an option of getting that seat if they still decide. We're not saying you're never going to be eligible. What in essence allows us to have a higher number of students, you know, looking at a bus, a bigger amount, larger amounts of students?
Yeah. So, that's legal regardless of the age of the students involved?
We will come back and ask for parents of Willow Lane, look, these buses are only running on the average 60% capacity in the morning. Some people aren't. If you're not, if you're not taking a bus, tell us and then we, and then we eliminate that kid for them. Plus, with the provision apps, things change, we'll gladly put the kid on the bus. So we're looking for a little cooperation.
I think the legal process has to be the same for all the students.
Okay.
Thank you. Before we go into other questions, I would do want to say just one general statement. Dr. Seidenberger, in nearly 18 years of being on the board, this is the first and most comprehensive study of transportation that I have ever seen in this district, and I want to commend you as a staff for producing it. Mr. Bacher, I believe you have the next question.
This there is on recommendation three and after recommendation six. An addition and what you just discussed about Willow Lane. I know from personal experience, at elementary school, my daughter probably sits about almost every day, but as she's gotten older and has a more demanding workload, sometimes she stays up late and we decide to give her a ride in the morning because that means she can sleep in 30 minutes later in the morning. So there may be situations where people are using, they're not never using the bus, but maybe they're using it 50% of the time or 30% of the time. And that probably also explains why the ridership in the morning is lower than coming back because my daughter takes most times back. And I'm wondering if combined with the, looking at the number of people that could fit on a bus or what the design number of people of a 72-person bus is, if you could utilize that fact and you still have a spot for people, but you're understanding that on any given day, maybe 20 or 30% of the people might be riding, and so you designed it for, you know, a higher number on the 72-person bus, realizing that it's going to be a reasonable number when it actually happens, but you still have room for the people if they don't?
That's exactly what we're proposing that we're going to do. I can tell you this, that we haven't been that actively engaged in that work, but we will be this spring. Again, I can tell you, Mr. Lancy, both of us have used VersaTran in other districts. I mean, it's a great planning tool. The other thing is, we've had now staff training on this and I've, I've got multiple people in the organization that now know a lot about VersaTran. Three months ago, we had, he had a passive interest, I knew what he could do, but I can't tell you I operated. But now we've had people have gone in and out and done some interesting things with the data. So I would suspect that if we start, let's say, in April, that we can start doing simulations and finding the most efficient way of transporting kids. And again, the point I was trying to make earlier tonight is, we control that in the contract. There's not a minimum amount of buses that we contracts for students for or with. So we can, if we want to knock off eight buses and you think we can do that, that's our business.
And then the final question, I think the shift back to the question earlier, this consolidation of buses in the recommendation, how is that incorporated, board isn't incorporated at all? Is it only incorporated in option two or is it incorporated in both options?
No, just option two. I can't, I can't, I have an inkling that we're going to be all stay roots, but I can't, either one as well, I don't want to tell you that tonight. So, we get data.
So you're saying for the people in the seven, the three-quarter mile, one and a half mile, we'll try to consolidate on the bus groups, so?
Well, I think what I said was, we're going to ask Dr. Moir to work with, I mean, Dr. Moir to work with his parents. I mean, I think it's, if the board adopts option two, there's got to be some trade-offs here. I mean, you don't have to do this, but I think if there are kids, parents that aren't using transportation, somebody's not using it. There's 134 cars every day. I think we have to do, maybe we find our survey and ask people directly, are you using it or not using it?
What percentage probably is it?
And I agree with you. I think my comments earlier tonight were not having it, stolen for a while, 60% in the morning, 69% in the afternoon, tell us there is a differential. And so we have to find out what's, what are the root reasons why that's happening. But I still think, even at 70%, let's say, there's room, there's legal room there.
Is there room to have imbalanced bus service, like assume a lower ridership in the morning and a higher ridership, or does that get?
We have our own analysis. I don't want to be caught short. One thing we've learned from other districts, sometimes you go over the top and then you have trouble, like the first or second base. I don't want to be running around and having people calling up and saying, we didn't, there was no room in the bus, that's one thing we want to do. So there's always going to be, I've got to maintain some degree of flexibility. And again, right now, the other thing that we can't control, I think you can appreciate this, even looking at the enrollment of Willow Lane, enrollment of Willow Lane has fluctuated tremendously the last two years. Remember last year, not this year, but last September, how many first grade kids we get in summer, 20? It's kind of about 20-some kids? I mean, we got to be able to transport those kids too, so it's always going to be a dicey proposition. One other thing on VersaTran, and I didn't highlight the savings, but one thing we're going to be able to do next year, we're going to stop mailing out the bus cards. We're going to do everything electronic. I did a brick, it's taken me, it will have taken me six years to do it here, but parents will get a notification, Angela Lincoln, will download your bus pass right from home, will be able to do electronically, if there's a problem, we don't have to send you out a new postcard, we won't have to do postage, we won't have to do labor costs, we think it's going to save you about $4,000 or $5,000 and be more efficient with electronic bus passes.
Another will-call?
What?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Urshon?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Question I have related to something that Dr. Bacher said, the challenge we have, airlines do deliver- do deliberate, deliberate overbooking of seats. They might have a hundred and fifty seats on the plan and they'll sell a hundred and sixty-five tickets, because they know some people won't show up, and if all those people do, then they'll offer incentives for people not to ride. We can't overbook our buses on the assumption that there are gonna be some kids not there every day. Some kids will be sick, they'll be on vacation, they'll be, you know, not riding the bus for some reason, but we can't do that, because if there is a day, like you said, when they all show up the first day of school, if they all show up on the bus, we can't call in and say, we left sixteen third graders at the bus stop at the corner of the street, send another bus to pick them up. And I have ridden on those buses as a chaperone on a number of trips with high school students. You cannot fit three high school students on one of those benches unless you're sitting on laps, and we don't wanna encourage that with our high school students. Thank you.
Mrs. Donchus?
Thank you. This is about the will call. This is something that could be carried over to St. West Coastville. And why I say that is in listening to the Little River County Township meeting the other evening, there was a discussion about the traffic backing up onto both sides in both directions, and there was a concern there. And if that makes, if they, you know, but we can understand, you know?
We can certainly look at that. The big difference of Little Land is that we have, kids can walk it, people may disagree with that. More kids can walk it because of the sidewalks. At West Coastville, not so much, but we can certainly win and look at those numbers and deal with what we did for Little Land and take the, we, in fact, we took, we have it, but we just haven't, we looked at every school, I think. We just have it. It took us a long time to compile every bus run every day, and we have that, so we're gonna look at that. One of the things we've talked about, Little Land, I mean, at West Coastville is working with the township, see if there's any more walking paths we can develop, because right now, only students from Little Island walk. Other, anyways in which we can design some walking paths out, more kids possible. And we're looking for township as well.
And then just like on table twelve, that is the people cost, that's just the first student, is there like an added cost? That you can say, how do you cost cost? Like in total, not just?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Lancy, but I think what you have in front of you is what we feel comfortable giving. I think there's a lot of variables, too many to get into an absolute, I could say an average. People would be happy with that, but I don't wanna be overly precise. I mean, I think the information we gave, a hundred forty-three dollars per kid, I mean, per student on the seventy-two-passenger buses, that's pretty good though.
One hundred eighty-three.
One hundred and, I'm sorry.
One forty-three for a three-passenger bus.
Hundred eighty-three for a kid, seventy-two-passenger buses, pretty precise.
Mr. Stoltz?
I would like to echo Mr. Ballard's comment about the thoroughness of the report, even though I did feel like some of it may have been answers to questions that weren't asked, like busing everyone, but I admire the thoroughness of the report. I would suggest in the future that you do double-sided documents rather than wasting all this paperwork possible. Minor critique. But as far, I like a lot of the recommendations you put forth, particularly one, two, three, and five, I just, I need to go over four, six, and seven. I'm sure they're common, just more digestives. I would suggest that a third option, which we're using, busing or not reducing busing, is before we reduce or don't, or do anything with busing, let's make sure that all the site improvements are in place first, before we go ahead and cut busing for anybody.
That's it?
That's it.
I only have one comment, this is gonna be a lot of material to digest, and you need to go over it very thoroughly to understand it because of the amount of the information. But my suggestion would be that we ease in to the increasing, the percentage of utilization figure on these buses over at least a couple of years to what we think might be our optimal number, because as we get more experience with this, if we use this will-call system, we could get a better handle on how close we can schedule, because if somebody gives us a note that they're gonna be there in two days and we don't have any space on the seventy-two-passenger bus that's gonna go there, we have a major problem in terms of utilization of the will-call system. So, we need to make sure that we have a certain amount of smop in that system, because we'll never be able to get it exact. And again, I wanna thank the administration for all of their work on this study. As I said, it's the most thorough and complete one I've seen in eighteen years. Have any other further questions? All right. Dr. Seidenberger, do you have any more to your report?
That's it, Mr. Ballard. Thank you for understanding this was a long report, but not really necessary.
Okay. We will move on now to item two on the personnel. Can I have a motion, please?
So.
Are there any questions on the elements of this item? None appearing. Ms. Purcell, you call Rose, please.
Mr. Ershon.
Hi.
Mr. Rose.
Hi.
Ms. Donchus.
Hi.
Ms. Kohler.
Hi.
Mr. Paul O'Connell.
Hi.
Mr. Bacher.
Hi.
Mr. Stoltz.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
All right, and we'll move on to other educational entities. Harvard Lehigh Interview Unit, we'll forward your report.
Yes, thank you. We met on the thirtieth of January. We typically meet on the third Monday, but last year, there was a concern expressed by some board members, the third Monday coincides with Martin Luther King Day, so we met on the fifth of Queen's Day this year. And one of the most exciting things that transpired was the announcement that Harvard Lehigh County Interview Unit has been granted by the state to do the first and only interview unit to give to the man principal certification. And giving a level-one principal patronial certification program, and it is supposed to qualify candidates from Harvard and Lehigh County. And this feel-like program is a comprehensive program. It will be delivered utilizing a blended model, allowing for customization, integrated support involved with development of regionalized personnel learning networks in communities, and is user practitioner-focused approach. So, they're very excited, this is one more service that is being offered to the educational community, right here in our own, own community. It is the only program not affiliated with a community. And that's the highlight of the meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. Any questions to Ms. Kohler about her report? None appearing. We'll move on to Lehigh Career and Technical Institute. Your side, your colleagues have any report?
I'll report with what we're looking at for the budget, and then anyone else can jump, jump in. It looks like for LCTI's general fund budget, we're looking at overall budget of twenty-three million, five-hundred-ninety-eight thousand and nine-hundred dollars. And this is a total increase of two-point-one percent, but you have to keep in mind that what we do is for the sending districts, they're contributing only one-point-two percent. So, the rest of that comes from the state and federal funding. And we did do, there are some budget increases that are affecting us, the salary, PERSs, health insurance is going up, payroll taxes. But LCTI has also been forward in trying to reduce some costs. We're looking at electricity budget to reduce supplies and equipment, health benefits for two IA positions, capital projects, structural equipment has been cut, business services, and reduction in a competitive equipment grant estimate. Just so you guys know, you know, everyone knows that they are looking at things that reduce costs, but you have increases that you can't control. And the other thing to keep in mind, this is based on a five-year average, so it looks at every sending school in a five-year average. And for us, it looks like we are gonna be contributing a total of two million, one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-one-twenty-eight dollars. And that is actually a decrease from last year by point eight-seven percent. And this is at a per pupil cost of five thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. And just so the public knows, you have to keep in mind that the more students that go to LCTI, there's a reduction per, in a per pupil cost. So, we always encourage students, if this is what they're looking into, it's actually to our benefit, because it decreases them the pupil costs. We also have the academic center, the academic center for East Penn School District, we've actually increased in our population. And once again, this is looked at a five-year average of attendance, and the total operating budget is one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, I'm sorry, one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars. And once again, this is an overall decrease of point nine-three percent, and our contribution is about a one-point-four percent, 'cause we have increased, and that's about ninety-two-thousand dollars. And a projected per pupil cost is about three thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. I know I threw a lot of numbers. If anybody has any questions, you know, I have the whole budget here, if anyone's interested to look at it. And once again, just reiterating what Dr. Seidenberger said, we're very excited about our students, and I counted them up, we had ten students who either got first place, third place, place, or second place, and the only other school that had that amount of students was William Allen, so we beat out Kirkland. And a total for the whole LCTI, which is fantastic, we had sixteen gold medals for the Skills USA, eighteen silver medals, and thirteen bronze. So, congratulations to those students again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Mr. Rose, Ershon, Fuller, do you, Ms. Fuller, do you have any other thing you wanna add, or does anyone have any questions? None appearing. We'll go on to item six, the TIP committee update by Mr. Bacher and Dr. Seidenberger.
I have a fair amount, 'cause we've actually had three meetings. The first TIP meeting was called by Lehigh County Development Authority, LCIDA, on January twenty-fifth. Although they had a presentation planned, the meeting was almost entirely devoted to the question of whether the committee meetings would be open to the public or not. After hearing several points on the matter and some information regarding proprietary and confidential information that would be discussed at some of the meetings, the consensus was that the LCIDA, LCIDA was responsible for leading and managing the TIP process, so they should make a determination whether meetings would be open to the public or not. Also, regardless of what determination was made, the LCIDA will compile minutes of meetings, and once approved, the minutes will be shared with the board, so the faculty will be open to the public. The LCIDA did take up this question at their next public board meeting, that was on January twenty-ninth, although I did not attend, I understand that they voted unanimously to, that the meeting should be private. Our second committee meeting, first one to go over actual TIP materials was on January thirtieth, at which meeting we discussed the following. There was an overview of the TIP committee's responsibilities, including at least three committee meetings. First meeting, three additional committee meetings, including that one. The first meeting was to discuss the project and the process. Second meeting was to discuss some projected financial data. And the third meeting, which hasn't occurred yet, is to review a draft of the TIP plan, was also to discuss that additional meetings are required, that would be in discussing the TIP plan. We also discussed the project overview, including sample renderings and maps, review of anticipated attendance, discuss, there was some discussion of the planning process and the several years of work that have already taken place between the offer and the county planning commission. There was an update on the project status, including zoning, development plan approvals, NDOT and PDS, which I think is the environmental approvals. The zoning is complete, and the other approvals and permits are in process. There were some preliminary estimates of the economic benefits of the project, including the creation of temporary construction jobs and also permanent jobs in the, in the area, in the.
Shopping center.
The shopping center, thank you. There will also be significant one-time and ongoing tax revenue, creation of significant one-time and ongoing tax revenue sources for each of the taxing bodies. Those new revenues would come from property tax, firm income tax, real estate transfer tax, Act five-one-five rollback tax, local services tax, and permitting fees coming from the TIP district. And only a portion of the additional property tax revenue is created by developing projects which we give to the TIP on. All the other additional income would not be constrained in any way by the TIP. So, no other public revenue, before existing public revenue, would be used for the project. TIP proceeds, I think this was discussed in an earlier meeting presentation for this body, of the planned uses of TIP proceeds would be for extraordinary infrastructure costs, and those would be the mine wash and car remediation necessitated by the prior use of an iron mine, iron mines in the area, traffic improvements along Hamilton Boulevard, Crox Road, and the two-twenty-two bike paths, a regional stormwater detention facility to prevent flooding in that area and adjacent areas, and public utility upgrades. It was discussed that TIP bonds are anticipated to be taxed exempt. There was some mention of efforts by the township and developer not to cause disruption for families immediately adjacent to the development site. There's apparently a, were some allowances made from a little fire park adjacent to the site. There was also an emphasis that there's a strong subscription from national, regional, and local realtors, so this is not a field, build the dreams, build it, and they, and they'll come, they expect to have significant, they already have significant sign-ups for the retail slots in the mall. And there are no financial guarantees required for any taxing bodies for the TIP bonds. Okay. The next meeting was held on February twenty-fourth, and the meeting minutes from that are not yet official. In fact, I just saw them, the draft go out today, so we're gonna have a chance to weigh in on, on those minutes. So, I'll just have more general comments on that meeting at this time. The project background that started in the previous meeting was finished. We reviewed the requirements of the TIP Act. We also reviewed the requirements of the urban redevelopment law and the township's light certification of the property. We also discussed possibilities available to provide security and credit enhancement for the TIP debt through a neighborhood improvement district. And that basically is, ensures to the bond owners that the bond payments will be made by putting a special assessment on the property owners in the TIP district, and that would be the developer and the anchor stores. There were some details of the private and public financing, public financing being grants and TIP bonds, and estimated total project, project cost could discuss. And there was a consensus at the end of the meeting that the LCIDA should move forward with the development of a draft TIP plan to be discussed at the next following meetings. I also wanna mention that I have received some public input regarding the TIP via email. There was concern about financial impact on the bus financing on the school budget, and concerns of additional, the additional jobs might increase student enrollment, and I would just like to add some clarification based on that input, that the expectation is the financial impact of the TIP would be positive in both the short term and the long term to all the taxing bodies, including the district. So, we're not spending money, we're getting now, we're expecting to receive additional funds from the, from this development project in the short term and the long term. The bonds will be issued by the LCIDA and secured by the revenue stream from the property tax assessments. tax assessments on the properties in the TIP district. Again, that's the developer and the anchor realtor. So the bottom line is that no existing revenues from any of the taxing bodies would be used for this project. It's all, all the funding comes out of taking some of the additional revenues that would be generated by this project out of the TIP loan. And I just wanted to mention that I'll be available after tonight's meeting to, if anyone is interested in clarification and wants to provide me any input, I'll sit around.
Thank you, Mr. Bacher. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bacher? For Dr. Seidenberger, it's also Ms. Donches.
Would you mind just to go over that? I mean, let's go again.
Yeah, so what happens with that is the township would identify the TIP district as the neighborhood of the town, and the property owners, at least, mark that, sixty percent of the property owners must, can't disprove, forty percent of the property owners have to agree to it. They get approval of it. And what it basically does is it puts a special assessment on the property in the TIP area, that if for some reason, for example, the assessment where someone made an assessment appeal and dropped their assessment, so the funds were no longer sufficient to pay the bond, pay the bond payments, the special assessment will fit in. And even though their assessment was lower, they would have to pay a special assessment. And so it's a method to ensure the bonds are paid off regardless of any change in assessment on the property. So it's a mechanism to provide, when we issue bonds as a school district, we provide our full payment credit of our taxing authority, and we get, say, two percent interest rates currently. This would not have any guarantee of any full payment credit of any of the taxing authorities, so the credit rates are expected to be higher. This is a mechanism to give bondholders some assurance that they will get payment on it, and pushes, puts the onus on the property owners, not on any of the government bodies. So it's a method of giving a, getting a more reasonable rate on the TIP bonds without asking for the full payment credit of any of the taxing bodies, any of the government bodies.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bacher. We appreciate your service. We will now talk about the transportation resolution as presented by Mr. Stolz, January 14th. Mr. Stolz, in view of the transportation study, do you still wish to put this motion on the table at this time?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Donches. All right, Mr. Stolz says this is your motion. I'll give you the first crack at it.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. As I said, right later on in the transportation report.
If I could just ask that you do use your microphones, please.
Sure. Everybody hear me?
Much better.
In light of the transportation report, I still, we're not there yet. All the improvements haven't been made. We haven't even put together a committee involving parents to get there, and there's still concerns about the survey, but at the first time, we're not going to be ready by the upcoming school year. And if by June, when we have our final budget presentation, and it miraculously looks like, lo and behold, maybe we will have things together in a fashion that makes these parents feel safe and that their student safety is assured, we can revisit it at that time. But I think for now, we all ought to give the administration direction and to do what's in the best interest of the safety of the little lame students. All right?
Someone else? Mr. Ernshaw?
Yeah, I've always been reluctant to put specific constraints on the administration in these superintendent's contract, and I believe also encoded in school law, the superintendent prepares the budget. We give priorities, but not specific scriptures like this. So I'm going to trust our administration to use their judgment, as they always do, to come up with a transportation budget. We've never asked them specifically to carve out any little piece of any budget before, and I'm going to trust that they're going to give us the budget that will be reflective of the costs we're going to have on the fall. So I would be voting no.
Okay? Ms. Fuller?
I'm very appreciative of the extensive work that the administration put into the transportation study, and I'm looking forward to reviewing it thoroughly. So I think it is premature and just premature to have this motion on the table. I would like to see a table personally, but I will go against it.
Okay? Mr. Bacher?
I'd also like a chance to review the transportation study. And so I agree with Ms. Fuller, I would prefer to see a table until we have a chance, as I just said. Just in general, though, as a matter of policy, I don't like the idea of singling out specific parts of our population for special treatment. And so I think I would prefer to, if I were going to vote for such a proposal, that it would be phrased in a way that applies to all of our students and not specifically the little lame students. I would also like to point out that the, as far as whether we will do something unsafe for the students, I'll remind everyone that the administration did choose, prior to the beginning of this year, to reinstate busing for the majority of the little state, little lame students, because the administration did not feel they were quite ready to put the plan into operation. So I believe that they will do the same this year if they don't believe we're ready to run it. So I will trust the administration on that matter.
Ms. Donches.
Yes, I would also like to thank the administration for the report, and that was very thorough, and I'm sure the public looks forward to reviewing it when it is on the website. That said, I concur with Mr. Rose, with Mr. Stolz. My concern is not even that these provisions be in place by the beginning of the next full year, but that they really need to be done at the end of this full year in order for parents and the community at large to be familiar with all of the enhancements and the provisions that we're putting into place. I will support this resolution because I feel that we're not ready.
Okay, I'm going to put in my own personal comments, apply me only and do not apply to anybody else on the board. First of all, like many others, I find the concept of attempting, before we have enough information, to direct the administration to do something of this nature, both premature and unwise, and for that reason, I will not support it. I think that I find it highly offensive personally that a person declaring to be conservatively principled would throw those principles under the bus and support a motion like this to spend money for a very small group without having all the facts in place to determine whether or not all of those expenditures would be warranted or wise. And I, like I said, I think that violates certain stated principles. And I also believe that the information provided in the transportation study provides different options and different considerations that should be considered rather than something as narrow-minded and, quite frankly, a pandering attempt to obtain votes, in my opinion, that should not have been contended by a sitting school board member. So from that standpoint, I will be voting against this. Are there any further comments? Mr. Stolz?
I think given the personal nature of some of those comments, I think it's wise that I respond. I note that there are many members of this school board that are willing to trust the judgment of the administration, but are not willing to trust the judgment of the parents whose students are at stake here. I find it interesting that the very people who use children for political gain when they're campaigning for school board are the ones who are now willing to throw them, quite possibly literally, under the bus. And, Mr. Ballard? Yes, I am a conservative. I'm conservative because I'm not one to rush for change. I think that this is the case, we need to stop, wait, look at what we're doing, and when we do it, do it right. And do it with the best interest of the parents and the students in mind, not simply rubber-stamping the administration's agenda, which is all certain members of this board seem interested in doing. And with that, I call for a question.
I didn't know that anybody was going to speak. Does anybody else have any other comments? Did the motion call the question? Is there a second? You called the question, but is there a second? Is there a second to that?
Come on. I don't think it is.
Okay. We will now call the question on ending debate. Ms. Berthold, will you call the roll, please? A two-thirds affirmative motion will end the debate on this issue.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Ayes.
Mr. Ernshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
No.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Eight ayes, okay.
All right, Ms. Berthold, will you call the roll call on Mr. Stolz's motion as this is number seven in the agenda?
Mr. Bacher.
No.
Mr. Ernshaw.
Ne.
Mr. Rose.
No.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Six ayes and three ayes.
Motion does not pass. We will now go on to business operations. Is there any objection to combining items one through eight? Is there a group of them? Okay, that's not, okay, number nine, it wasn't, we'll have to find out. Ms. Donches.
Yes, can we still have, can we have bill list approval separated out?
All right, with the exception of bill list approval, there's anything else that needs to be? Two through nine.
I don't, Mr. Ballard, is a pointed order, or maybe I call for the orders of the day, let's deal with number one first.
All right, we'll do number one first, and then we'll ask about the rest. Can I have a motion for number one, please? Some of it. Second, discussions. Ms. Donches, I presume you have a discussion?
Yes, thank you. I have been emailing some of my requests and putting a larger dollar amount that I'm curious about in order to get the account code on the vent for the purchases. And I know I've had discussions about this before, and in fact, I even spoke to a woman today about it. However, I must say one more time that I would like to see the account code for each of these purchases listed. I don't know if it has to be on this report or if there is a report. There has to be a way that the purchase is attached to the account code. I read it from the budget, where it says, "Account code each," this is an instruction to the budget receivers, "account code each requisition form, and only use one code per form. Use the entire sixteen or eighteen-digit code." It gives an example. This code is essential since it will be the basis for payment of a final bill to the vendor. And if that is then attached to the purchase, I don't know at what point it becomes detached, but I would like to see it reattached and put on the report whereby I have the full account code so that when I go to annual, to go on the budget, when we go to levy taxes, that I have the most detailed and I can make the best informed decision in the interest of all of us. So I think...
Ms. Donches, would you identify what you were reading from?
That unfortunately does not have an individual article on here, but I might point out how it's nice to have it on the bottom of each page. This is the 2012-13 General Fund Budget, page Yoman numeral two dash sixteen. I know we all have different levels of information needs. I'm a person that needs a lot of information, and given the job that we have, I feel it's So given that, I think I'm going to do that is just start at the top, because I know that this syllable has the account codes, just to start at the first check and continue through the checklist and get all of the account codes.
When can we propose to do that?
Now.
Okay.
Mr. Ballard, I have a pointed order. That's not relevant to the motion at hand. Not only is it not relevant to the motion at hand, it is a request that appears to be trying to get around a board motion that we previously voted on one of your other motions.
But that was last year.
It doesn't matter what year it is, Ms. Donches. If you want that information, you are going to have to bring a motion forward and have the board through it.
I'm being told that this information doesn't exist, and I know it has to exist from what I just read you.
It doesn't matter what you believe or don't believe, Ms. Donches. I just stated the proper procedure. If you want that information added to the information, that must be produced by the administration. You're going to need to have voted the board to do it.
But it appears that the rest of the board isn't interested in this information. That was clear from the last vote. And talk about, I know even Dr. Seidenberger mentioned tonight the frustration of pulling all of that information together, and then Mr. Danson mentioned, unfortunately, he's gone now, but he, how often he's told that the information doesn't exist. I was told for months that the East Penn School District line item budget did exist and the numbers don't keep kept in the way that I wanted them, and I have that. These things do exist, and I would like to make a motion then, that the account codes be listed.
We have another motion on the floor, you're going to have to wait until the end of the meeting to introduce another motion, and it will come up on the next agenda so that we give adequate public notice.
But I would also like these account codes in this text folder for this evening.
Ms. Donches, what part of, you can't get that information unless you get a vote of the board, do you not understand?
What's the name that's considered an individual question?
Ms. Donches, what part of not getting that information without a vote of the board don't you understand?
But we don't have to have...
Ms. Donches, you've answered the question.
I'm telling you, we don't have to get the vote of the board to ask the question. So I'm going to ask what the account code is for any of these lock and save company supplies. If this is a completely non-compliant.
What's the flagrant board?
As a volunteer who needs to report to work tomorrow, I really have to bear to go through fourteen or fifteen pages of account codes. I really fail to see how we are enlightened by this.
Okay. Mr. Bacher?
I'd also like to add that we discussed this issue last year, and we discussed that any board member can get two minimums, questions answered, but anything that required more involved time and especially if it involved spending any money or personnel time would require a vote of the board. So we have discussed this in the board, and the... the decision, I guess, is insensitive, was that we didn't want to tie board members' hands for reasonable questions that didn't take up a lot of time. But if we're starting to talk about the expenditure time, which I believe going through the bill list individually would take, I, I would like to see a, a motion of the board to authorize that, because I don't think, I think probably most of us don't think there is a valid reason for that.
I will rule your request out of order, Ms. Donches. And if you wish to take a vote of the board to have that decision challenged, you're welcome to do so right at this time.
But, point of order, I'm still on the bill list approval. I don't have it written in another.
Ms. Donches is trying to insert a question here that will require all this extra work and trying to get this extra information while in the discussion of voting on the bill list.
Well, shall, shall I make that motion? Shall I make that motion now?
No, if you want to revisit this again for the second time, you make it at the end of the meeting when we go to new business, and we'll bring the entire subject up again at the next meeting. Any other comments on the bill list motion? One appearing, Ms. Bertzel, will you call a roll, please?
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye, Mr. Stein.
Mr. Bockers?
Aye.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Nay, I would like more information.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
All right. We will now proceed with the rest of the items, two through nine. Does anybody have any objection to putting them together? One appearing. Some of them, second. Ms. Bertzel, will you call a roll, please? There are no questions. All right.
Mr. Pollicano?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Bockers?
Aye.
Mr. Stolz?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
At this point, it's new business. Ms. Donches, you want to bring forth your motion for the next agenda?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move that the account code from the Pennsylvania Charge of Accounts, the complete account code from the Pennsylvania Charge of Accounts, be added to the fund accounting check summary. Or?
I write, so point of order, I believe Ms. Donches was on the, not on the prevailing side of that motion the last time it was made. So she cannot, I believe, under the rules of parliamentary procedure, reintroduce that.
Something that's not in what year you're in?
I'm going off of memory. That's what I thought as well, that you were the one, I believe you were the one who raised it. I'm going off of memory. I don't particularly recall when you raised it.
I have raised it before. But very well.
I guess for simplicity's sake, with the, with the, with the consensus, there was a motion that hasn't been seconded. The point of order was raised. I guess somebody could check the record for accuracy and verify when it was. And it was then deemed that the motion was actually made by, you were on the losing side, if you will, that Minister Earnshaw would be correct. I'm going off of memory. I believe that's the case.
Point of order, we've had a board reorganization since the vote was taken, making it a separate, technically separate sitting board. So wouldn't that mean it's a separate session, therefore could be brought up again?
That question is directed to you, but I think it is. In fairness, rather than you putting on the spot under Robert Tools' order, I feel it comes up like that would check that outside of this meeting.
Could you get us to answer that by the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I would like the administration to do that.
Thank you.
That way everybody could check the record about that. So I want to check, and what you want, we haven't had a, there was a motion, it was not seconded because a point of order was raised. So do we, if we find out that it's legal for Ms. Donches to bring forth that motion under Robert Tools' order, should we have it on the next agenda or not? It's, I don't decide if it's on the agenda, it varies. It's not like, uh, the pattern.
Well, but I think the intent here is, if you hit through the red tape here, is that the motion will be on the agenda.
All right, so. It is a point of order, then. My understanding is that motion, it would have to be made by someone who had voted against that motion previously. Anyone who voted for it could not make that motion. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, the second point of order, if you will, to keep all points of order, was that there had been a reorganization meeting with the question whether or not that makes a difference. I'll double check. All right? So let's, let's try it this way, try to get everybody on the same page, and try to accomplish this. The motion will be listed on the next agenda. However, if Mr. Fisher's analysis is that it cannot be made by the person who made the last motion of the same type,
Anyone who voted on.
Anyone who voted in the affirmative for that last motion which failed, then someone else will have to introduce that motion on the next agenda. So that, that, sum it up. It will be listed. However, the only person who can bring it up will be one who can bring it up legally. And so that will be determined by Mr. Fisher. He will get the information back to the board. We will all move it in advance. Who will be necessary to bring that motion to the board again? Does that sound fair and sufficient, everyone? Okay? Is there any other new business?
Yes.
Ms. Donches?
Yes, I was just following up on the timeline for the investments policy. I know the administration, obviously, they're very busy, but is there some kind of timeline that once a board policy is presented for revision, that within a certain amount of time, it comes back to the board?
Dr. Seidberg?
Yeah, I, I, we've looked at, I myself have looked at over thirty policies right now. And I think by next quarter, we, we can have a recommendation. I'll, I'll tell you what the recommendation's going to be, though. And that is the treasurer reports out once a month. I mean, that's, I've looked at, we, we, some. And that's the most prevailing timeline. So you can expect to see that on my recommendation.
And in the investments as well?
Pardon me?
And the investments as well?
Yes. That the treasurer reports to the board once a month on the status of investments. That's the most prevailing language that I see in over thirty board policies statewide.
We will have comments in periods in the board hours.
Can I have a more question? I have directed to the solicitor. We have insurance advisory council, and they make recommendations to the districts regarding insurance coverage. And it appears that we purchase insurance through the companies that some of those advisors are employed by. And I have been asking if you could render a written opinion to the board on whether this situation opens the board or the taxpayers to civil liability.
That will require a motion of the board. Second.
Wait, no, he's saying that she's got to introduce it as a motion.
She's got to introduce it as a motion, and it will appear on the next agenda.
Then I, um.
You're requesting a written opinion from the district solicitor, which requires the district to expend funds in order to produce that report.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the solicitor render a written opinion to the board on whether, there, the board or the taxpayers are open to civil liability since advisors on the insurance, since the school district purchases insurance, or it appears to purchase insurance from members of the insurance advisory council.
And that will be subject to discussion at the next meeting? Any other new business? Mr. Bockers?
One of the recommendations in the transportation study with a board policy intent, is that the only agenda for next meeting, or is that, I don't know, does that have to be brought up as a request from the board, or is that something you're suggesting?
We'll, we'll, we'll have something for next quarter. Listen, drive. No other new business appearing. I would wish to make an announcement that's not listed on the agenda. The district rifle team just won their district competition. It's now the champions of the current district. And it's another one of our teams that is an outstanding representative of the East Penn School District. We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss real estate negotiations and personnel matters. The February fourteenth will be a full day for all schools. February fifteenth, there will be an early rehearsal, eleven o'clock, at the middle schools and Mays High School. It is a snow makeup day. February eighteenth is President's Day. All schools and offices will be closed. And our next meeting will be here in the boardroom at seven thirty PM on Monday, February twenty-fifth. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.